Let us bow our heads in prayer. Most gracious and everlasting Father, once more again we would come to say thank you for your grace and mercy. We ask you to give us the strength, Moses Christ, and wisdom and knowledge to do our jobs as a council. Help us to work together as a council on trust. We bind and come against anything that's not like you right now on this council and the audience right now. We have a lot on our plate. We have a lot of people depending on us to do the right thing, Lord. We ask you to give us the strength to do that. In Jesus' name, amen.
Right before you approve, I'd like to amend, we talked about yesterday we voted on the aeronautics project. I'd like to rescind my vote on that deal because I found some information about that project that I'm just not comfortable with yet. I think we need to have further discussion.
If, in order to do amend the agenda, if you're going to vote on, actually vote on something, change or change your vote, there has to be an exigent circumstance and two-thirds have to approve that. And then you can do it, but that's what, that's the procedure you have to follow to do. I'm not sure if an exigent circumstance exists. There may be, but you can discuss that in motion to...
Yeah, I'd like to second it, and I think we need to do some more intel, get some more information, and make sure we make the right decision when it comes to that. So I'm seconding that. Make sure we get the proper information moving forward because that's the first time I heard about it. Nobody did any labor. I don't think we did due diligence to make sure we made the right decision. So we got a second to move.
You have the, you have the motion to amend the agenda. If the motion passes, then I think you'll have to also vote to, to say that there's an exigent, there's an emergency circumstance that exists in order to vote to change anything. But you do have a motion and second.
Yeah, I think we need to look into this.
I haven't signed the contract yet. I haven't signed the contract, so I just want...
And, and how long are we talking about that? I know we're going to that. Why are we already talking about rescinding the minute now to explain that even before we go into this? In the second reading of this budget, the same thing was doing. We voted the budget down and two days later they came back talking about continuation, which is not legal.
Well, it's very legal, the way that was done.
How?
What do you mean how? The conversation is inappropriate at this point, Mr. Chairman. There's a motion and second. If you want to vote on it, you can. If you want to talk to me offline, I'd be glad to talk to you about that.
About that, but can we go ahead and pass this on through because I, I wouldn't be...
Well, if you have the guts to do it. He has a motion and a second to amend the agenda to have another vote on the aeronautics issue. If that passes, I think you need to have a motion to declare an exigent circumstance exists, and then, then it would be appropriate to move forward.
Well, I'm not certain, you know. If you do, let me hear a little bit more about what you're talking about. I know some more, but I ain't saying that's not a question.
Well, we got a motion and a second. All you gotta do is ask me before hands is over.
We got a motion and a second.
He said it's an emergency.
That's actually the next thing we, is that right there?
What's, I mean, we don't understand what emergency is there.
Well, anytime we're talking about spending county money, it's always an emergency. When we start talking about wasting money, that, that, I don't want to give too many details because I don't have a lot of facts for black and white in front of me, but from talking to the persons that was over this, this project, I'm not comfortable with. And it was rushed too fast, which is why we need workshops to talk about these things instead of just shoving papers in our face of 2019, 2020.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. I want a favor, raise the right hand. So, okay, now I have to have a motion to...
To declare that an ex...
Declare it as an emergency.
That declares that an exigency exists, and I think there needs to be some facts that declare what the emergency is.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman, and the reason why the amount of money that we spend to spend in the blind, I don't really understand what's going on. The full details of that amount of money to spend for somebody to actually tell us something and then build it, that's not enough. We need to have more detail before we spend that money.
And what I understand about this project is this is something that the federal government has already told us. If it's not done by October, they gonna snatch the match. And we knew this how long, and we're just getting ready to work on this. It's not, it's not gonna finish. We're wasting too much money.
Yeah, we... Yeah, October, October never ever.
I second. I wasn't here yesterday, so I, I, I don't know what was going on.
You got a motion.
I know.
Call in favor, raise your right hand.
Where are you gonna add that, Mr. Chairman? You add it right at the beginning? You're gonna add that right at the beginning?
We got, we gonna add it back where we could go back and pick that from, but we, but we...
Yeah.
You just want more information, more information, because I, I have no problem with that. I have no problem with that. Just basically what we've been, that's fine. I'll, I'll call it, work it out that way. Add it back on. Thank you back here, Mr. Chairman. We got to have it. Discuss the whole detail.
In order to provide the budget, the progress of the county purchases, the county of bill for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021, and ending June 3rd, 2022, and as often implement rates and fees for other tax purposes, the county of progress, of course, and to establish the tax limits to provide for the budget.
Everybody signed up that wants to sign? Anybody else want to sign?
Anybody who doesn't want to make comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it looks like the first person is Ms. Betty Nichols.
I'm very proud of this place for a cleaning, because this is the last email. I want everybody to have a say, and then say something. Glad to listen.
I'm Betty Nichols, and I'm from Lakeview, South Carolina, and I got a couple of questions that I would like to ask concerning Lakeview since Lakeview was the one Dillon County. My birth is in the state of Dillon County, and I'm 82-year-old, and there ain't nothing going and happening in Lakeview. They always sound like they broke. Ain't got no bank, ain't got no money. Can't do this, can't do that, but yet they can do what they want to do. So I want to know, these budgets, and I asked that question once before, is Lakeview included in these budgets when it comes to money? Because we get nothing. I'm glad for this report that I got here concerning, we got a new mayor. I don't even know who he is. We got new council. Don't know who they are, because they have not been presented to the people of Jesus. Our mayor was named, I was about when I met the vote, but there was no name I get. There were three people named for councilmen. How do you get two councilmen out of three names and leave one? You ask for something, you don't never see nobody coming to it. They don't even have a decent trash truck. They come around and pick up the building. Now the garbage is with them. Now what they put into every time, they feel like putting them through every like three months or two months, however, it's already been twice this year since last year. And the truck they're pulling is, the, the, the bag is, look like something out of Little Goon. And I asked the question, why he didn't keep the contract with grandstand of whoever was in charge? But they can do everything by a mill pond that don't belong to them, which is a God-given mill pond that belonged in every town. But they got money to do that, and it gets parked and whatnot. But yes, they ain't got no business in the little way they come in Lakeview. And I'd like to know how much of Dillon County council are part of Lakeview. I know we got our brother Miller there, but I only just met him, and I talked to him. But we need some revenue or somebody to come and just see what's going on in Lakeview. We got a new mayor. He have not been around to talk to nobody, even before he run. I don't even know who he is. And that, that, that don't make sense. And I'm, another thing I lately know, what is the jurisdiction when it comes to the policemen in Lakeview? We got four boroughs in Lakeview. You know what they are? Anybody know what the four boroughs in Lakeview are? But the cops are not, they used to go there long, what's upon a time. No, that was then and this is now. But the cops are supposed to be able to go in the country if you need them. Is that right? And they said if you need them, call central station. That's a question. And Dillon, everything is in Dillon. I can't get to Dillon. I'm not buying somebody to bring you to Dillon. They closed the banks, and, and the Washington, the Washington, I don't have a lot. Everybody don't have these facilities. So we, I need to know, is Lakeview is still a part of Dillon County? Every time something comes up, it is listed, you hear about every county listed with Dillon County except Lakeview. So I, that's my question today. A lot more, but I want to know that from this councilman of Dillon. And I'm a participant of Dillon County, as well as Lakeview. I'm a Lakeview one, I know that. But y'all ain't doing nothing when it comes to Lakeview. Now, no more, if you, if they get money, nobody don't know what they doing. It took me seven years to get a little bit of gravel on the road on 14th Avenue between Waverly Street and Cedar Street. They just did it, and they, they didn't do a good job. So I'm just sick and tired of making it London Bridge falling down. Oh, Jesus. Ain't got nothing out of business. I can't buy a parachute at the pond. I can't buy a, I can't cash a check in the park. They talking about beautifying the park in their neighborhood.
Oh, my God, that's true.
Rosie. That's, that's a shame.
The next speaker is Mr. Kevin Drawborn.
Now, I want to ask, and I'm talking about two departments here, 911 dispatch. The director did come, and what we did give him, and what I'm looking at is because the governor is now calling back and offering out of that $300, people are going to go back to work. And like he said, McDonald's can pay more than he can. He won't have no workers there. So I think we did increase it a little bit, but if it can decrease a little bit more, we need it. God forbid that these citizens got to be put on hold to get an 911 call in. Also, Sheriff Park. Now, we put back what we take to start with. That's good, but we need more to go with that. Over there in the town of Latt, Town Willess Street. Okay, we got one side of the city, the other side over here is the county. What they do is they come over here, committing crimes and whatnot, county got to come. Excuse me, excuse me. City can't go over there, county got to come. They stretched thin enough as is. They, I believe they still covering for Town Light over there. They're stretched thin as is. Need more money. City can't put no deputies on the street over there in Town Light. And as far as the budget, that's all I want to say. All right?
Next speaker is Toni, Ms. Toni Graves.
Greetings again today. Hopefully I'll be allowed to get out everything that I need to say today. Is there a time restriction today? You know, it's my understanding that there was a time restriction yesterday, and I'm on the agenda, just like everybody else. But I get to that. My time is very important, especially when you're 20 minutes late, but yet I got to be rushed through my presentation, and I had to come last week for no reason at all when the meeting was canceled. But nevertheless, I'm talking about the budget at the end of the day. I believe that we need a HR director to be in charge of hiring practices, making sure that we're within legal realms when we're looking at hiring qualified individuals for jobs. So I hope that the budget include a HR director. This is, this county should be operating like most counties and making sure that there's equality when we're hiring individuals. Also, I believe that we have money in the budget for economic developer. I really feel that this need to be in place. We need an economic developer that's going to do the job to make sure that we have businesses come here. I don't think that those positions be binding to one. And again, I'm going to keep talking about this department with the sheriff, this budget with the sheriff department. We need to make sure whatever the budget was prior to the new administration, it need to be back to where it was and then add, because we know that the crime continue to exist. So we need to work on that budget. The officers are on call pretty much 24/7. We know crime usually take place after business hours. So if there's an emergency, they're going to be called out. You know, summons to take care of, of stuff, and no telling how long the investigation may take to secure a scene or anything like that. So please make sure that you increase that budget for the sheriff department and these roads. I want to talk about that. I live in a subdivision that I like to consider to be a nice development, and I signed a petition back in 2004 when I built my home. The value of my home is over $200,000. And it does not make any sense that I have to drive on that road and, and mess up my cars. My husband was out there. I thought the county sent somebody out there to put those rocks out there. But lo and behold, to find out, my husband went and bought that stuff and was out there sweating trying to fix the road himself. I don't know what happened to the petition. I had everyone in the neighborhood sign the petition to fix the road, but it don't make any sense. Every time I call up here, I'm told it costs $200,000 to pave one mile. But in, in other neighborhoods, I can see that this is being done. But if you offer put some money in the budget and come down Tupelo Road, I would greatly appreciate that. And I heard some very disturbing news yesterday about these fire departments. I did not know that this was going on, that we have communities in Dillon County that's out there in la-la land that don't already have the facilities up, but there's no one out there to man those fire, I mean, no one out there to man those fire departments. Turn on the news and look what happened in, in Florida just the other day, when they have been warned. They have been warned that those, that townhouse was in jeopardy of being destroyed. And look at the lives, the bodies that are still not recovered, the likelihood that they, they would not be found alive. I think about that, and I think about these homes out there in those rural areas where if their home caught on fire, they're going to lose completely everything. Lives could be lost. And I'mma tell you, if something like that was to happen, if I was those citizens, I will come up here and I will be screaming bloody murmur. I will be looking at council. If you don't put someone out there to man those facilities. And last thing I'mma say is I think council owe me an apology for really interrupting my presentation yesterday, because other people come up here and make their presentation, and they're not given a three-minute room. So I, I'm not going to hold my breath on it, but I would like for council to apologize to me for interrupting me on yesterday.
There's no one else assigned on this list. Yeah, I'll just, I'll give a quick interview. My first foremost is the budget's, there's no village increase for the budget this year. So it stays at 143, you know, 123 to 20.5 mils for debt services. It's 143.5, a little of that. The, they make the speed stated $40 per vehicle, which is always pretty good for a while. We did, level home license fee stayed $25. The W H J's fee stayed at $50 for mayor's license for, $50 for in county, $75 to charge for out of county applicants, $100 for out of state advocacy, mayor's license fees. The $55 fee for resident commercial buildings, fire fee is still the same. The only difference is last year we added a town in Lakeview last to the municipal areas of the county, just paid $55 on that too. The solid waste, the household solid waste fee established by Dillon County is still, is still $100 on that. Number 14, we always put a tax anticipation note should we need a tenant. It got to be, we don't have a hurricane or something like that in the fall. It's always been in here for the last 15, 16 years or more, that too, for that. The school resource offers, you'll be receiving some money from county board education for that, about $400,000. From Dillon Christian School too, about $20,000 on that too. We do still have fire response fee, you know, which we implemented last year. Based on the iPads that they use, they get the iPads and the Fire Department says today is to change companies instead of the Lakewood building, women with the, what's it called?
Another pair.
Another pair.
You changed the amount of fees on the commercial industry? Did that fee change on the commercial industry?
Yeah, on the solid waste.
On the, on the fire fee?
Yeah. We, we got, let's see. Yes, residential billing, let's see, response call is $500.
That's from another pair.
Just on the note of that.
Yeah, that's, he's asking, you're talking about when they pay the taxes. Right. That's what he's asking. What's the fire fee when they pay their taxes?
Oh, it's $55.
Yes, it's just $55. I thought we talked about increasing that on commercial property.
No, we just said $55. That's what we charged. That's what we did last year. Everybody just paid $55 on that too.
So we're going, we're going to keep the commercial property paying, say you make the payment of the house?
Yeah. It's supposed to be in the past, and then some other stuff too. I know the fire response fee, they got commercial industrial building fire response fee is $1,000, and the vehicle fire, I see response calls $150 on that too. The EMS is still the same as $400 for transport and $700 for emergency one level transport, $900 for that. The mileage still $14, $14 per mile based on that. So the only other one is, is that we did, we did go up on the box fees, you know, like $5 on the box fees for the, let's see, for the four...
Six and eight.
Four, six, and eight yard box, we went up $5, is that right, for each, for, for one pole, two poles, three poles, is that right? Okay, we need four poles, whatever something on the water. On six yard box. And then we, and then, and then the MSW went up to $55 instead of $54, just, just we got a dollar increase, you know, from Lake County landfill. Went up CPI on that too. So that's why we went up a dollar to cover, to basically cover that cost there. And then the, the pole fees stayed the same on the, on the 20, 30 yard boxes, 20, 30 and 40 yard boxes. And then the, for landfill, MSW, $55, $56 for the industrial waste, and $29 for the seedy waste, which technically, that's the same, is that right?
Yeah, went up a dollar.
Went up a dollar, oh, it went up a dollar.
All right.
Okay. And then the, let's see, there's some there. The animal control fee stayed pretty much the same. I'm looking at that. The business registration fee, let's see, stayed at $15 on that too. The fees for the recreation were, baseball sign-up fee was $30, $30 per participant. Football fee was $30 per participant. Cheerleader sign-up fee was $30 per participant. Accident insurance optional, $5. No, no participant, no gate fee for regular season only.
No gate fee? I thought we talked about any of that?
Yeah, we talked about it, and that. I think the recreation fee can come back, the recreation event, modify that.
This is why we don't have no money, man. We got too much pressure. No one in the world afraid to be paying the same fire fees as I'm paying for my house.
Yeah, yeah.
That's ridiculous, man.
Yeah.
What are we going to change? We don't keep it the same because it was that way last year, 10 years ago. And we don't change it. We going to a new year. Let's get it changed.
Yeah, yeah.
Answer the question.
Yeah.
A little what he's talking about.
Yeah.
We changing the fire fee, $15 a year?
$55 a year.
If you're going to change it, what are you going to change there?
That's what I'm, I think what he's recommending is that we charge one fee for residential and a different fee for commercials, is that right?
Yeah, so is it fair for a million-dollar company to pay the same fee?
When we had a workshop on this, we were discussing this, and we were trying to get a village fee, and it would be based on village, somebody with $200,000 pay a lot more for their fire, it's a lot more $55. There's somebody living in $2,000 bubble home, in the same way for the industry. And we looked at this village thing, and we knew it's going to take some time to implement. We couldn't get it this year, so we left everything like it was, but we were planning on going with the village here. But we just couldn't do it.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. We in discussion now about the budget for capacity. I'd like to take a poll before we move on. I want it on the record that I be voting against this budget. The reason why, okay? Fire station five, Manna, Carolina area, Dingham area. That's a part-time fire station. There wasn't money in the budget allocated for those areas. At 5 o'clock, nobody's out there. We have a fire. We hours of the night, nobody's active. Response time is too far to get out to Bingham, Carolina, Manna area. You looking at a loss of life, loss of property. That's total disregard for my people in my district. So I'm, I'm be voting against. Secondly, economic development director. That's a much-needed position to fill. You don't have the time to spend do that job correctly. There's no way possible. You were hired to be the county administrator. That's a very complex job. That takes your full attention to be effective. As a council, I don't think we did our due diligence in workshop to ensure that we check each line out, dissect it, make sure we had the funders in there for the pertinent positions to fill for our citizens. And lastly, Clay, I'm rooting for you. Believe it or not, I'm rooting for you. If you win, we all win, but we got to do it the right way.
Amen.
Yeah, that's good.
Amen.
Yeah, we do, we're looking at the enterprise thing too. We're looking at, we're committing out with the budget too. The only thing we did this year too is that we did put in, did put in, like I said, like Mr. Cloud said, we did, only got one person in there for, one position for station five. Still got a little bit of money in there for station six for part-time on that too. We did, we did create litter and, I mean, litter control officer. We did get a grant from the state to do that this year, about $20,000 last year, $20,000 this year. So that's going to offset that. We are getting some, it looks like the local government funds going to get some money there to cover some of that aspect there. So I, and I think it's going to be through a reappropriation, wait state deal on that part there too.
Why we use that 2.95 we got?
Yeah, we got 2.95 from the, I call it the state, state and local coronavirus. We did receive money about two weeks ago, two, three weeks ago or something. We did receive...
What were you using it as, my question?
Yeah, we're going to have to come up, you're right, we're going to come up with a plan.
You got a plan. We need a fire department.
Yeah. No, I, I don't disagree with you. And I, and I think there's some possibilities to use some of that 2.9 billion for different activities associated with emergency services and fire.
Is there a timeframe in utilizing that money?
Yeah, the timeframe is hopefully, when I'm, actually, because I was on Zing call this morning with National Association of County, which, they, I think they finalize or about close to finalizing, you know, the guidelines specifically, you know, can be used for that. So, you know, they got some broad, broader categories that we were looking at now. But, you know, we, we received half the money now, we'll receive the other half, which would be 5.5 million, 920,000, something like that.
I know, I know. Paying salaries would have carried that money? Paying salaries would have carried that money?
That's, that's not...
I mean, it's not recurring. I mean, also, you can create a job if you carry that money.
It ain't, it ain't recurring, but that money is for paycheck protection? No. What is it for? Last time I asked, nobody said they knew. So when I... Well, they just released the guideline. All right, so what is it for? Tell us what it's for. It's for infrastructure. It is for, I didn't bring it, we...
Uh, broadband.
Broadband.
Production revenue.
Yeah, if you have lost revenue.
Which we did.
And medical. We did. We had lost some revenues as well. We cut out salaries.
Yeah.
Yes, it's not for paycheck protection. All right, so we can go through this budget and see where we can use that, since you guys want it spread out black and white. Use the 2.95 somewhere else and use that money that we already have allocated to something else that we can use for a more pertinent position.
You're going to come up with a...
Only thing we got to do is change it around. It ain't, it ain't rocket science.
Yeah, I think Mr. Cloud's going the right way. I think that what the rules are is, the way I'm seeing it is, is you sit down and look at the 5.9 million, which you look at half of this year. I think that what the rules are is, the way I'm seeing it is, is you sit down and look at the five point nine million, which you look at half of this year. A couple of you said we come up with a plan, it's okay, we can use this much of this, this much of that, this much of this. And really, they got all the categories that you can pick from.
Alright, my question. When you put the five point nine million, what you gonna do then?
Same thing we do every year, get another one for a million now, we do it every year.
Can't use bonds, that stuff isn't.
I'm just saying, but the stuff we can't use bond for, use it for, the stuff we need, you know, money, so you see that?
I think the niggas said we just cut out some, they said suspend.
That's another problem we got.
We wasting money on other things that we should be putting towards making sure that someone has on.
I agree with that.
Yesterday.
And that's why we need workshops, we come in here every month and sit up here and get information the day before that we cannot go out and research. So we have all the details, just like yesterday, we spinning wheels, we just spinning wheels up here. And we look like lions, we look.
Something that could be impervent. You better spend about a million dollars on landfill, you have a lot of people hollering about their trash not getting picked up and raised and going up too. And I promise you, people fuss about trash all day long.
I understand, they fuss about trash, but what I'm saying.
When they shut us down, and you gotta, they ain't got nowhere to carry, we don't have to carry it up longer. We might charge them more, you're losing all your revenue coming in, what you gonna do?
I understand, but you don't wait till the last minute.
Might not, but when it's waiting till the last minute, you better go ahead and do it now instead of kicking that can down the river.
They kicking cans.
That's what we do.
Keep, keep, you keep, keep it away from people, we ain't gonna have one.
And that's the kind of stuff that we need to be talking about in workshops. We come in here once a month for a half an hour, hour, dragging around, everybody got their own personal vendettas, and we not serving the citizens, man. We come up here putting on the show.
Everything y'all want's fine, but it costs money. They had so much money played in, and he tried to balance the budget the best he can, that's what he came up with. The only way to do anything any better, if we want more thing, is charge people more for their services. And that'd be raising taxes a lot more.
So there ain't nothing in this budget we can take out. That's, we got some stuff in this budget that's not as pertinent as fire departments.
See, that's the thing, we didn't go down each line out and dissect it. They, we can pull from, money from all the areas. Stuff that's not as important. We definitely make sure a fire department is on full time.
All these positions we got, and we got two and three people doing what one person was doing. That's where you can pull. Instead of hiring people in vacant positions, move them around. Instead of hiring more people when you already got ten, twelve of them.
I have a fire department in my district, we can get answers, twenty times more cost, probably fifty times more than station five. They have one engineer, and now they don't have anybody to do the same thing as.
I respect that, but what if? And we know in the ministry office, we, we know, we got people over there not doing anything, we can pull from that area. We can pull money from, we just need to dissect and look at it very close and make sure we serve citizens properly. They depending on us to get this right.
That's it. And we need to start thirty, more than thirty days in advance. We doing the budget, we should've been working on this three months about.
They was asking for a brush truck that was worth about sixty thousand dollars, was that brush truck sixty thousand dollars?
Do they really need that? That's the thing, that's sixty grand.
Another thing, economic development, how much money is school getting out of that fund?
They getting about, I think it's about a billion two, something, somewhere in there around a billion two.
My point is, do we, can we afford to get them there?
It goes up, depends on what, really, depends on what industry.
But can we afford to get them there?
I mean, that, that's what you've done the last five, six years.
I don't care about the last five, six, we can do more, right?
That's why people voted here for that one.
That's right.
We can afford to do it. So these are places where we can cut and we can produce revenue to make a fire department open, to hire HR director, to hire economic development. But we don't wanna do it because we don't want accountability. That's why we want it.
What's up, council, side of the room?
Council decided, we talked about it in the workshop, and then we came out, and nothing that we talked about was in here. I spent three days of my time up here trying to talk about this budget, trying to make sure that we had these pertinent positions in here. Trying to make sure the sheriff had the money he needed, and nothing's done. He don't have the money he needed, you gave it to him in one place and took it from the jail. We talked about long-term to the governor, he just walked in the door. The job that they're doing for the county, we talked about giving them money, instead of what we do. Fifty thousand dollars to the city, that's gonna be stamped with, with this little golf course. School districts. Four hundred million dollars worth of inventory.
To serve the.
To serve the inventory. Not, not personal.
And if he got the inventory, he needs some help.
He ain't got the staff and stuff, he gotta, he gotta help. He can't help him just because he got the inventory, that ain't helping.
We do.
That's one thing, but it has to be passed down.
You have to take into account what he already done in the county, what he done helped. So, we, we just totally disregard that, we didn't try to pinch him off anything.
Secondly, if something happened right now, what we gonna do? Our sheriff gone, the grant writer, we let her go because we didn't do her right. Mr. Moses gone because we didn't do him right. What are we gonna do? Keep playing politics or handle business?
I mean, economic development wise, I think we've been pretty damn successful compared to most counties in South Carolina. We've got Equus and Kevin last year, we got Lyman Gordon doing expansions. We got Marlboro Development Team's already putting up a building right now, they're looking to do another building.
So Clay, what new industry has been in Dillon since you've been back? What haven't been open since you've been back?
Acrylic, which is, spec building, which is out there by Lyman Gordon, you know, the one right around the corner. Used to be Hoover, they're doing that, it's about, about a forty million dollar project.
How many jobs out there?
It's about forty something jobs.
I'm saying right now, is it open?
Yeah, yeah, Hoover was, acrylic just bought Hoover out, which is, which is basically doing.
So they got people hired out there right now?
They're, they're putting in equipment and stuff and putting.
My question is, how many is open operation right now since you've been back?
Yeah, you've got the one in Lada, you got the box plant in Lada, I call the old box plant down, which is, uh, spectrum quartz, you got that done. You got, basically, you got Equus building, which is three hundred and seventy-three thousand square foot spec building out there, that's done. You got spec building, this Marlboro Development Team's putting in right now, which is about two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand square foot spec buildings. You got, they're looking at possibly doing another one. You got Equus doing another one. You got, uh, Lyman Gordon is doing about half a million square foot expansion over there. So, I mean, so, you know, you, you've done, you've done a pretty good job. If you, if you get this road project done out there, which that, which I think is gonna be probably one of the biggest economic development projects probably in the entire state, not just in Dillon County. If you get that done, you got, you just got to, we just, we just got, getting ready to unveil a Port Authority master planning study that was paid for by the US Department of Commerce in eighty-eight administration, an almost two hundred thousand dollar study, getting ready to unveil in the next month. Which is done, which has got, got seven counties involved with the economic development study, which is probably, probably the number one study in the entire state of South Carolina. Now, wait, now, let me stop, no, no. And then you got the water and sewer studies done, us and the city of Dillon have been working hand in hand on that. We realize that the water and sewer, especially the sewer in the future, is gonna be a major issue, it's gonna be a major issue to overcome. Because if you don't have a proper amount of sewage in Dillon County to be able to treat it, then you go, then you not gonna be able to grow economic development. So the city of Dillon, myself, Lynn Wager, and city of Dillon have worked hand in hand with hand engineered and PD Regional Councils to go, so overcome that. That, that's getting ready to be unveiled. We got, got a hundred thousand dollar grant that I wrote, both the grants I wrote myself, and got, got that grant done, that was paid for. That, that project there is probably gonna outline what the future, how future, how future Dillon County goes. So that study's been done. We just did a traffic study, which y'all just approved, transit systems, which basically is gonna come in there. And that was a hundred thousand dollar grant we wrote from the EDA to the US Department of Commerce. I don't think the United States Department of Commerce be giving us grant money to do studies, they didn't think it was important, just like we did. Of course, the South Carolina Department of Commerce thinks all three of those studies are major important, major important. They, we would not have the money to do this widening out there on this four lane project if we wouldn't have done these, these studies and basically worked in there with Harbor Freight and Lyman Gordon and Quick Trips and Equus and everybody else coming to take it. So, I mean, you know, there are things going on.
A county the size of ours with a population, we got two neighbor counties doing more than what we doing. This name one.
I can't name one.
Name one has folks in the way.
We don't even have enough people to work at the jobs we got now.
That's right.
You think we do?
We may not have enough people to work at the jobs we got now, but part of that's because the pertinent positions that need to be filled are not filled. If we had an HR director.
We don't hire the people at those places.
I understand. Again, if we had an HR director, that would come out of their, their office, posting employees, screening, making sure the right people are in the right places. Do y'all have an HR director at the school? You know exactly what they got, they got one. Ain't no million dollar business in the state running without HR, none, find one. You can't.
I will say, I will also say one thing, economic development wise, like you said, we.
Everybody got their weapons, their own opinion, I got mine, you got your one.
So your opinion is we don't need an HR director?
Yours might not be right either.
No, 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 I asked you.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
We hopefully, the economic development activities that are associated with the county will come back in. Like I said, we've got, we've got industry out here, you know, just speak of, you know, about dock horse, you know, we've got those, we've got those offices filled. We've done, we're still working with NISA and SC Commerce every day. We're getting, people are coming in, looking at Dillon County every day, but it doesn't necessarily get their company. We've got, you know, we've got probably two or three projects that we're looking at, but I'm not sure they're gonna go back and come and build. You know, so far, every time, every time we've had a project that's, you know, every time we've had a building that's open, we've been in the field. We've got people looking at Witt's building now, which is, you know, humble land building, but we've got some companies now that are looking at that too. So they're, they're looking at either buying or leasing that building. So we've got, you know, we've got a lot of, we got a lot of things that I think if we, if we, if we approve the road situations, tie in with the South Carolina Port Authority and this master planning study. We're gonna be, there's a list of companies, a list of agencies that we need to basically go after based on that study. So once we get that study complete, then we, we will be able to sit down with NISA, we'll be able to sit down with Department of Commerce and South Carolina Port Authority and Dillon County. And we're gonna use the other seven counties basically to be involved with that to make it go.
So your proposal is that you can handle the administrator and the HR director and the economic development.
You got Lisa Deggers over there does the signing of when they get hired and benefits.
Hey, talk about benefit, HR is not just benefits, man, that's the insurance question. I'm talking about handling problems in the county. Hiring and finding, keeping us out of lawsuits that we have.
They can't hire anybody like that without going through the administrator. Just like the one, you said the one at the school, they don't do it either, they go through your superintendent.
Yeah, I understand, but everybody has a road.
Yeah.
Right now, everybody has a road, we got a one-stop shop, he's the HR director, he's the administrator, he's economic development, and it's a thing, the ball is being dropped everywhere. Look at this budget, see that?
Raise taxes like you don't know what to do.
Listen here, if that's what we have to do survive, that'd be one thing, but right now, we don't even need to raise the taxes, we need to cut out some of the garbage that's in here.
But you talking, you talking about doing another half a million dollars for speeding.
Steve, we can go through this budget and probably find a half a million dollars in here that's wasted, I guarantee you.
What you call wasted, somebody else might not call wasted.
Yeah, but what you have to do is put things in order on a scale of one to ten in order of importance.
That's right, then you have the majority vote.
That's true. But the majority voting on something that we didn't even put together, we didn't even look at this through our eyes. And you per say missed three of the meetings.
I'm gonna say this, I'm glad you said that, I'm gonna get up and stand up and talk for a minute.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I missed two meetings, I missed on the twenty-third, and I'll let them know a month ahead of time. I didn't tell you because I don't have to, she didn't tell me because she didn't have to. I missed on the twenty-ninth because it was a call meeting. But, one thing I will say, you throw rocks and live in a glass house, in your glass house, and in your district. You know what, I do live in my district, I run, I'm in, he don't. He don't live in his district that he represent, he lives in Mr. Dawkins' district. But there's laws and rules that say you're supposed to live in your district. But nobody, honesty, transparency, accountability, that's all I hear. Honesty, you live in your district, you live on Third Street, you got two houses, good, I'm glad you do, just like everybody else does. Alright, you don't live in your district, that's honesty. Transparency, you're supposed to be a man of the cloth, you gonna lie about where you live. But I tell you one thing, I do know a good man of the cloth, and he's the Democratic chairman, I think we ought to talk about it, where you live. Him, and I hear Judge Birch all the time, maybe you should talk to Judge Birch about it. We probably do, because you know what? The rules don't go for everybody but you, and that's what you seem to think. The rules are for everybody. And the thing is, all this honesty and transparency, these people know you know where you live too.
We talking about the book.
Steve, we talking about, hey, what is honesty and transparency just means about what you want, or is it for everybody? That's what I want to know. Is honesty and transparency about everybody?
No, we still talking about the best.
It's about everybody, but it's okay for somebody to lie and do, do the wrong thing.
Fire department, let's talk about fire department.
With fire department, we, we talking about pigs, we talking about fire, we don't wanna talk about that, do we? We don't wanna talk about that. If you go wrong, you live in a glass house, just remember that.
You got, give them, give them the fire department, if we don't have them, they're lazy.
You gonna push people and transparency.
I'll be quiet, I'm gonna root y'all, I'll order and ask the sheriff to let you leave.
What did you just say?
Yes, I do. I've heard Phil comment about us cutting the budget, Sheriff's Department, I want to know where.
We could've done this year.
Exactly, I want to know where.
Maybe, maybe I've heard that. Senator this year.
Sheriff sitting down there.
I ain't heard nothing about it. I've heard it yesterday and today, I can't find no word, I want to know where the budget been cut.
I work closely with this council, and they have gave the sheriff's department a two hundred thousand dollar salary raise in order for us to put some people to work. Now, I think we're the mix up in that, before, we didn't know who the sheriff was gonna be at the time when the budget was cut from the jail. And Sheriff Hugh, as he was going out, they did cut some positions at the jail. Those positions was not put back into the budget. But I don't want this to turn into the sheriff's department versus council or anything like that. Let me say this, what they gave us, we'll make it work. I think I came here, avowed by, and told you all that I went before the school board and where money was being taken out of the overall budget to support the resource officers, the schools said they would pick that up. So along with that, we can make it work with what we have. We understand that there's shortfalls everywhere in this county, and, you know, we're not gonna be able to solve the problems overnight. And we just hope and pray that maybe the next time we do a budget that we can see put, to put some back in the jail if possible. And I know it takes raising taxes and doing different things. But let's quit arguing, bigging, we need more help just to be up here. We got myself and the chief, we got to come up here every week, or every time y'all ever be, because all this is going on. To me, y'all seven, and I know you got to have a meeting to do it, but y'all got to get together. Y'all need to be around the round table, silly should have to hear what's going on up here like this. This, this is something a five-year-old can come up here and be awesome about. I mean, when y'all come out here, y'all should be together. If y'all got a disagreement, it should be amongst y'all in here, it shouldn't be where the people, the citizens of Dillon County got to hear this. And, and if you had somebody come in, even thinking about bringing some type of business here, they leaving after the day, you know, they not coming about it.
Now.
Won't make business in a county like this, you know. We just got too much other things that we need to be doing, and y'all just need to sit down, be men's and women's about the business.
That's right.
And, and, and work it out. And don't be arguing every time we come up here. Y'all, y'all should be together, you know. I just hope that y'all can come together on some issues and, and work it out, but the sheriff's department gonna be alright. We, we gonna be alright, we gonna make it happen with what we got and the funds that we gonna receive from the state, and we gonna be okay. And I just hope if we need to come back to you, that we can come back to you and address our issues and you all can see where maybe you can put something back. If it came to that, but right now, we'll be okay.
Sheriff, you hadn't asked us for anything that we hadn't given you, because I know.
No, and really, until we can get this budget passed, we really haven't gotten anything, you know, because we operate, I'm, right now, I'm operating off the previous budget. We, we operating off the previous budget, and this budget, it won't go on effect until it get passed. Uh, one thing y'all did that we appreciate, and all departments appreciate, if we get this budget passed, you know, our guys was working for something on like seven dollars, seven dollars, fifty, seven dollars. What they, some people average what they call over, uh, Chinese overtime, but it's not that, but, and you all agreed to go to strike time. And that's gonna be a big help to the guys and women's at the sheriff's department, at the detention center. It's gonna help them out tremendous. And myself and the chief, we gonna govern the overtime, we're gonna make sure that we stay with. And, and myself and the chief, we gonna govern the overtime. We're gonna make sure that we stay with it. What you will allow it for, if it per se something happen and we have to do some extra overtime, then we'll come and visit that with, with council, but right now, you know, let's just try to work together and be good stewards over the money. And, uh, to me, y'all just work together. Y'all can work out a lot of these issues instead of two or three just trying to do it and then bring it to the rest of it. And, and I think that's the problem you have. Y'all need to work together.
County account.
Thank you, Sheriff. You want, you want to tell us something about long-term recovery?
Yes, sir. I didn't never get a chance to say that. Thank you. Uh, I appreciate the council and everything for giving time, but I've been here time and time again, and I hear you guys talk about economic development. Disaster is economic development, and I'm gonna tell you why. We've took and did over a hundred and eighty-two homes in this community in Dillon County. We placed some roots. We gave away six homes last year. We also opened up our business over there and developed in the area, and it was only one councilman from the board that showed up. I didn't get support like the other agencies. I'm an industrial as well in this area. I, I, I sent the invitation. I sent it to the, the board of the ladies that working here, and I, I don't know, and I gave it to them to go, but I'm not singling out one person. I'm just saying, I did, and I see them everywhere else, but we have done that. Every other county when I came before helps their long-term recovery group. Now, this is something that he just spoke about, and I'm gonna tell everybody. I just been named as the state, um, uh, mitigation resilience officer, which is that is gonna allow at least ten million dollars for disaster to clean ditches and to help with roads. They have to come through the disaster, but they told me to partner up with my city and county municipalities. I can't do that when y'all won't even help me out. I'm, I'm just trying to survive in this, and I didn't ask for a handout for me. Everything that I do is for the county. And again, I hear people talking about, um, transparency, man, I don't live here, but I put my business here because I grew up here. Dillon County gave me a chance. I'm bringing stuff back to Dillon County. I have a concert this weekend at my facility to put fundraising here for this county. I have people coming in from all over the country that's gonna spend money in Dillon County. They have, they have booked two hotels here and three in Florence. That's gonna be money this Saturday for this county. With, with all your taxes for spending a restaurant, they're gonna go around, that's businesses. I bring stuff all the time. I'm not actually taking anything out, but we also building up to help those that don't. I just ask to have those, be aligned item like other counties are helping. There are only eleven disaster agencies in the state. Dillon County, which is ours, this is what I created, is ours. We lead the state in what we do. But it's being done by my funds, not the county. When they say Dillon County long-term, it's like they say, oh, the county doing it. I don't say the county don't help me. I, I say the county is all in it. I talk good about my county because I love Dillon. I love Dillon because I play sports here, I got educated here, and I wanna continue to do things here. I don't come to argue with you guys. You guys been good. I'm just asking for help and to be represented in that. And we continue. I started here in this school, got my education, and received my doctorate last weekend. It, we, good things come out of Dillon County. But I hear a lot of that, and I started coming to meetings because I hate when I look online and see this going on. I feel something like this should be made, is that concessions or behind the board because it shouldn't be about, it shouldn't be about. And that's coming from that. There's no reason that you can't come and comment itching together because everybody has a man of faith, and we all to walk together. Psalm one thirty-three says, "Together, a man dwell together in unity." There's no unity in this board. And there's no unity in this room. We shouldn't be divided about what they doing. I like what the sheriff say, "I'll work with what I got." That's, that's a good thing. I'm working with what I got. I, I met with Clay. Clay said he was gonna come help me, he was gonna do something, but I have things that can help Clay in the county as well. But it ain't been turned back.
We all work together. We gotta get on with this meeting. I appreciate you coming.
No problem. Thank you so much for that, Mr. Mayor.
We got to work together. We can't pull against each other. Okay, we're down here, number four B, third reading, orders to provide budget appropriations with county appropriations in the county of Dillon for fiscal year beginning July of twenty twenty-one, and ending June of thirty twenty twenty-two. And obviously, they'll be paying rates and fees for other type of purposes, and county appropriations purposes to establish the tax millions provided for the budget. It requires a motion. You have a motion? You have a motion? Is it second? It's motion number second. In order to, oh, in favor passing the budget, raise your right hand. Oh, opposed? Okay, it's a tie. Um, we in a situation right now without a budget, there won't be no payroll. Nobody can get paid. We gonna have to go in through emergency and, and what we got to do then?
What I would recommend you do, at, at the beginning of the meeting, there was no exigency about the budget because we didn't have the vote was gonna go. Now there it is, because tomorrow's another budget uh, year. I prepared in, because I didn't know if the budget would pass or not pass, I did prepare an emergency ordinance for you to consider uh, that, that just continues the current budget through the time the next budget passes, whenever that is. And whenever that budget passes, then it'll be charged to, to next year's budget. Uh, that's what this emergency ord- ordinance says. Uh, I'll give you a copy of it. It's very short. But what you will need to do is now entertain a mo- motion to further amend the agenda given the exigency of circumstances to pass the budget, the emergency budget ordinance. But I'll give you, I'll give you a copy of that.
I, I'll answer your question. If nobody had, the town of Lakeview has a budget themselves, and I'm not trying to be funny enough. The town of Lakeview has a budget themselves.
No, I just wanted to know, are we in the budget because we don't see no, because you're telling them for...
Outside areas is in the budget. The town of Lakeview, we give to their recreation, but they have a budget themselves for like their trash truck. They're doing stuff, I'm just telling you. I mean, they have their own ta- town taxes, stuff like that, and they supposed to run their city or their town off of their budget. The town.
Is that only the ten thousand dollar recreation that Lakeview is receiving?
Yeah, but we have helped them out in other ways. But like the parks and stuff, those are town parks in, in the town.
We need some business in Lakeview.
You do. You do.
And, 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 and even we have a water sphere for the, for the five. I had to come to town one one. No, I'm just outlining. Even I'm come home, I've been home for seven years to live, and then I, I'm born and raised. But to tell you the honest God truth, they didn't even have a Lakeview car, police car, and I questioned it, why don't we have Lakeview police car?
And I'll answer that question.
No, no, let me tell what they told me. Lakeview can't afford it. I said, it don't come from Lakeview. It come from the county and the state. Now, let me give you another, uh, 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 some of that, and I'm finished, but they more. At the courthouse, I was told Lakeview didn't have money to buy stationery. I said, if you told me, I would have with the family dollar, dollar general, and I'd have got a two of the, of the plane and the security, and I'd have bought it to you.
Now, the town budgets, they supply their town car. Now, the sheriff right here, they do outside the town.
We don't know, we don't get no budget plan or nothing. We don't get nothing. We don't even have nobody to telephone no more.
But now, we did, we did, we had this one percent money that was in the past. We gave to them. I think they done, they did some work in the recreation. They built a little splash pad over there, something like that, put lights in the track.
Where? In the white, in the white section, but not the black.
No, I don't know what section it was in over there. Every time.
I'm asking where.
We don't have nothing to do with the meal farm, that's the town council.
Now, that's what I wanna know. That's why Lakeview can't talk about buying a meal farm, but they ain't got no money for nothing else. Every town has a meal farm that God put here for creation.
But I just wanted to answer some of that for you while I could.
No, that still don't, let him, don't tell me much, but I'd love for somebody to power up on this.
You may need to go to your town council.
Well, my God, you're where?
We gotta go over this, the board's got orders of, uh, people not gonna get the shake.
But it's a continued resolution.
Yeah, it's essentially a continued resolution, but it's in form of emergency ord- budget ordinance. What I think, you had already made a motion earlier that didn't include exigency. That's why we did it two, two separate ways. So if you do, if you make a motion this time that there's a finding of exigency circumstance, emergency circumstance, and a motion, we can tie that in with a motion to approve the budget, the emergency budget ordinance. I think you'll be fine. Well, that, that's to amend, uh, amend the agenda to that purpose.
Let's amend the agenda again?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda.
Is it second?
I second.
I'm in favor, raise your right hand.
I'll make a motion for that.
To approve the budget ordinance?
Yeah.
Is it second?
Second.
Okay. I'm in favor, raise your right hand. We're down number five, we adjourned. We have a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion with the chair.
Is it second?
Don't play.